And welcome to the nine oh five podcast. My name is Roland Tanner.
I am Joel McLeod.
And it's a Tuesday nine oh five roundup this week. And a couple of stories that have been in the newspapers of the last few days. Starting off with Holton District School Board and well, that story. Just won't go away. Joel, what's the latest?
Well, it I guess in case you haven't been paying attention. A brief history for those who are all on the same page. So last year. A photo surfaced in the in the media of a teacher, a shop teacher at Oakville, Trafalgar School. Who I who it was an identified trans woman. Teacher who was where who was boarded wearing very large. Fake brass in in the shop class and. Naturally, it caught the the attention of a large swath of the population, large swath of media. Lots of protests happened because of it and even drew the attention of the Freedom Convoy. I don't know what you call the convoy people showed up to protest and. And 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 whatnot inside the school. And it led to bizarrely enough, the Hallton District School Board saying, no, we can't do anything about it because there's no dress code to now say, okay, now we're going to implement a dress code. And along the way has seemingly just. Made a mess of the entire process from start to finish. So the last week at the at a board meeting, the board came up with a tentative policy, the dress code policy, which. A lot of the a lot of critics, a lot of parents were saying, this is not a concrete policy. It was a. One, one person said basically it's a word salad with no teeth, no power and whatnot. And. The the plan is for this policy to go back to the development stage and it'll be brought forward at a few a later meeting to be. Voted on by the by the board. But basically, what we kind of puzzled is like, why are we even at this stage? This should be, in my, in my opinion, at least, this really should have been an open and shut case of just saying, yeah, we don't have a dress code. Our bad. Okay, we'll develop one. Same dress code for. The students are now is now applied to teachers or something akin to that. And, you know, professional wear. Professional, practical clothing at the at the in the for the teachers at the at the school. And that that's it. Open and shut case and we move on. Instead, this has been like six months now or I'm estimating about that. Six months of just this bizarre. Self inflicted wounds on the Halton District School Board that quite frankly, I'm puzzled as to why. I am puzzled as to why we're talking about this at all.
Yeah, I'm puzzled while we're talking about this. So I hate this story.
Yeah, I don't blame you.
I mean, it. It's just, there's just no good side to it. I think. I think we were talking about this before we came on and we're we're in sort of disagreement about it and I'm willing to say I don't know for sure. My feeling has been for for a while that it's not. Meant to be the job of the of the, you know, in the way that our system is set up, the school board, which yes, is the employer of teachers and manages the schools. There's the Ministry of Education, which oversees the whole thing. There are the unions who represent teachers' interests with their employer, with the ministry and with any other body. And there's the Ontario College of Teachers, which is kind of standards and disciplinary. Entity. It's meant to regulate standards and it's meant to, you know, if someone is. Does something completely inappropriate. Well, you know, a teacher who is. Teaching inappropriate things or behaving inappropriate towards students, that would go to the Ontario College of Students. So I kind of feel that they're really, you know, we're everybody's looking at the school walls to fix this issue. And well, for a number of reasons, I think the school board. It's not really their job. I mean, it's kind of sort of maybe sort of their job, but I don't really think it's their job. And I think this is why they come out with something completely ineffectual, because they're bound by. Legislation, by collective bargaining, by all kinds of other things that they don't have power over. So they come up with something saying what they can do, which is like, oh, we'd really like it if people didn't. Wear crazy things to teach, which is about as strong as they can probably put it. Is my feeling. I could be wrong.
I I'm going to disagree with you because I don't think this is the Ontario College of Teachers isn't the governing body here. They they would license a teacher. And they would, you can go, if a teacher decided to. Stop teaching. Facts like the example I came up with is, you know, in history. If a if a if a teacher decided to. You know, go like the Ernst Sundle route and pronounce and say like the Holocaust wasn't as bad as it as. It was, or the Holocaust didn't happen at all, which it did. Then you take that teacher to the Ontario College, he said, they cannot, they cannot have a license to teach in Ontario schools anymore. And that's what that's what they would govern. You know, if you start teaching, you know, E does not equal MC squared. So well, no, it does like why, or if you're playing favorites to one student over another. You could go and and try and discipline that way. But in terms of. The actual employment standard. So. The school board is the one who dictates, okay, this is how. The schools operate that in our system, that's how the the school, that's what the school board does. They say. Schools are open from this time to that time. They say that the schools are, you know. They they employ the teacher and they say the teacher will conduct themselves accordingly with if a teacher is found to be. Let's say the worst case scenario, teachers is found to be abusing a student. We don't take that to the Ontario College of Teachers, not until, well, you do, but not long after you you take you take it.
Some I'm going to read out some decisions here. So you can go to the Ontario College of Teachers website and they have the results of disciplinary hearings. So here is, I'm not going to name the name of the person, but I believe they were found guilty. In two thousand and two, so it's a long time ago. And against a given teacher, they found that he had committed acts that having regard to all circumstances would reasonably regarded by members as disgraceful, dishonorable or unprofessional. Contrary to Ontario regulation, blah, blah. He engaged in contact, unbecoming a member contrary to Ontario regulation, blah, blah, blah. He verbally abused a student or psychologically, emotionally, blah, blah, blah. So there's a whole bunch of, I mean, those are quite fake statements, actually. And it goes on page after page to sort of say, but I mean, that's the kind of discipline. It's like, has a person contravened the standards?
But he he but he loses his license wrong. He doesn't lose like loses his license. But it's his employment is still part of that school board. The school board then has grounds to terminate him or her. Employment because you're no longer licensed and we can't have a non licensed teacher in. But here's here's the thing. Parents are. Regardless of that, the the Ontario, the Halton District School Board then. Has still agreed, but we're going to wade into it because they're saying, no, we're going to have a meeting on this. If they were, if they were completely powerless, not they they do not have a dress code for teachers. They're completely powerless on this. Front for whatever reason, that's all they had to say. Say, it's not us. Go take with the Ontario College of Teachers and deflect it up the up the ladder. But they didn't. And they took it upon themselves to say, we're going to have multiple. Multiple meetings on this to hash out a policy. They've taken upon themselves, they're going to write a policy governing this. Is this like, so to me, regardless whether or not they they the whoever ultimately, whether it's the ministry, the college or whatever. I think comes down to, no, the the ministry, the board is the employer on record here. They have a right to say, these are the standards to which we will employ you. Nobody would, nobody can be, nobody's going to be employed and say, well. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take your employment up with this other body over here.
Yeah.
Like the Ontario, the Ontario College just says, we're not your license to call, let's just to teach this province or not. That's it. They don't say.
But decades and decades of practice have shown that school boards basically have no power to discipline teachers. And no power to terminate employment of teachers. Because those things have all been collectively bargained one way or the other. Which is fine. I mean, I think that's probably as it should be. And it's completely inappropriate for school board X to have different standards and school board Y. I mean, why on earth would. Holton have a dress code saying you can't wear this. And then Hamilton might have a dress code saying, well, you can wear loon pants and and.
They do it. They do it all the time. Hall and Cath, Hall and Catholic has a has a. Dress like they have uniforms for their students. And it like.
Students is not, it's not staff, students, students and children.
But they have different standards across the across the the gamut. I don't see why, I don't see why one board, I I agree, like this probably should be a uniform. Code across the entire province. Here's the thing, maybe maybe there are are other boards in this province that do have dress codes for teachers. And we don't hear about it because, yeah, that's, you know, there's not a problem there. We know exactly what's what's happening.
Maybe, maybe, and maybe this person chose, I don't know. There's been all kinds of rumors. I'm not going to repeat the rumors that have been out there, albeit they've been said on the radio by. Fairly prominent people. I have no idea the truth or otherwise this whole thing. I mean, I think it just comes back to the same problem we've seen every time we deal with school board issues. Which is the school board, whether it's the Catholic Board or the Public Board or any of the other boards. They're just letting them things. They either shouldn't have the power to legislate on pride flag. Or unqualified to to legislate on pride flag, you know, or anything else. This is a committee that should be, you know, dealing with things like budgeting or whatever. And sure, they should have. As an employer, they're entitled to have their expectations. I just think I think they're. Enforceable because that kind of thing is handled through collective bargaining, through through higher level. Management. And that's as it actually should be. And like, once again, the problem with all these debates is like, why the hell are we even having this discussion? At a school board level when the ministry with a sweep of a pen could solve the whole thing. Now. Fact is that the, you know, if if the ministry starts telling teachers what to do, the unions are going to want to get involved, but that's fine. That's the level that those kind of discussions and debates should happen. The school boards are impotent. You know, in in doing stuff that's to do with ethics and. You know, general standards and all this kind of nonsense that they really have no business even looking at. It it's the fast of the school board system all over again. It's kind of how I see it.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm not, I'm on the, I'm a bit on the fence in terms of doing away with school boards or not. I kind of, I see. I I can I can understand the the drastic re. Addressing of powers more to the more to the provincial level. I. But alas, here we are. I mean, that we're we are where we are because right now school boards do have. The ability to do that. And there's and the ministry is not taking it upon themselves. For that reason, I would dare say. I I am puzzled though, why like. The school board should be able to handle this. They really should like, they should, they should be.
I mean, what's this all going to be? When was the last time you heard of a teacher being fired? And who fired them? As far as I can see.
Well, I can, I can think of a school. Well, there was a couple of times back, right after getting being. I graduated from high school, there was an accusation of a teacher in the, there was a story in the paper, but a teacher who was, well, without getting the 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 details was very inappropriate with. Students and they were disciplined, like there are ways to discipline. No, we don't. The teachers are not fired. They're not fired willy nilly.
That's that's the Ontario College of Teachers who will have done that.
Nope, they can't, they would not have fired, it was the it was the board that fired them. The Ontario College of Teachers can only take away their license to teach. They can't fire them.
But that's in effect firing someone because they can no longer teach, right? I don't think it would have been the board that terminated them until after that disciplinary process was done. And that's what we're dealing with, I I think. I mean, the whole thing is such a mess. I I do think the board handled it wrong at the outset and getting involved. I think people have. People understandably expect the board to be the one to to, you know, kind of lay down the law and say, you know, this is not good enough. I just, I really don't think. Even if they have theoretical power, I don't think they have actual power to do anything significant. And that's why you will see ineffectual. And vaguely worded statements about appropriate dress.
If that's the case, then the board's still screwing this up because they need to come out and say, we don't have the power to do it. Like everything, the reason why I think it's a story is because the Halton District School Board is. A coward to the nth degree on all of this. They're not willing to stand up and say, no, there should be standards of dress for teachers to wear. Now. They've said, they've come and said, wait and said, no, we're going to. Put the put the onus on it. The Ontario College of Teachers isn't going to. Like what what gets me is like, if nobody else is going to set up, say, yes, our responsibility, we are bad. We don't, we didn't put it on there. Then the Ontario, the Hallton District School Board shows stepped up and said, you need to give us direction. You need to, we're putting this on you. We're going to refer reference this to you. To give certain, now they said that they have not done that. They said, no, we're going to, we're going to hash out a policy of our own. All all in all, like the the process that they've done has been completely. Buggered. Like I personally, I'm saying, why not just come up with a policy of their own? Write up a policy, say, no, we're going to take the student's policy that we're doing and we're going to reference, we're going to impose the student dress code on the teachers, which is very reasonable. Again, the the student dress code is not prohibitive in any way. You and it would still give teachers flexibility to dress to their personality and it would not, I don't think would impose any. Infringement on trans trans teachers to dress how they they feel is appropriate. I think the why the Hallton District School says, fine, we're going to, we're going to challenge this, we're going to put this out there. And if we've overstepped our boundaries, then you have to tell us that we did. If the Ontario College of Teachers says, no, 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 it's our, it's our responsibility, fine, but you have to do it. Instead of getting all the flak, I'm like, why are you, why are you taking all the heat?
My understanding of the kind of chronology here is that. Yeah, again, the board doesn't, the board is not a unified entity. The board is professional staff on one side and the and the trustees on the other. Professional staff didn't want to do anything and I believe kind of made various statements to the effect that they couldn't do anything. Maybe not, I don't know if it was in their mouth. My understanding was kind of saying, you know, we don't want to touch this. The trustees themselves, you know, trustees being elected and never wanting to miss the opportunity to to, you know, show off. Voted in the majority to sort of force the the professional staff. To come up with some kind of thing. Well, now you've got staff who don't want to do something, being forced to do something. And so what do they do? They come up with something, well. Most positive way of putting it is that that, you know, and I saw this at the council level as well, that. They will bring forward something that is consistent with the law at as a minimum. And so if it's weak and ineffectual, it may be a because that's the best you can do within the law as they understand it. And it can also be that because they don't like what they've been told to do, they're deliberately undermining it. Not saying that's what they're doing. I'm just saying that's something that can happen in other circumstances. I suspect it's a combination of all of the above. You know, so they have this draft thing which will go to the trustees and the trustees can then, you know, posture and have their say. To no great end and the conservative ones will say conservative things and the other ones will say other things and it will be no further forward. But that this is school board one O one, you know. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it's a, it's a stupid business, but I. If I had to guess, and I don't know, that would be kind of what's gone on here is is that division between. The board trustees and the 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 employed administrative people at the board. Basically kind of facing off over this as to what's possible and what they actually want to do. And on the whole, I'll probably side with the professionals over the trustees as a rule, but you know. I don't know in this case.
I just suspect that this will be a. In the in the end, this is going to turn into. That's just, it's just going to paint the Hallton District School Board in a bad light. It'll be. I mean, you can, you can complain about the the system as it is, all you want. It it and it there's as open criticism, that's very valid criticism, but the system is what we have. We have to work with what we have. I look at this is, I don't understand why. The boat, the board has turned this into such an issue. I think I also, I think that they do have the power to implement a dress code. I think they are tipped 20 around because they are afraid of. They're they're ultimately afraid of. Stepping on the rights of transgender teachers. To express themselves fully, which is a valid concern, but I also think it's. Not but clearly not having one is causing more of a problem. Like you've, you've got to step step in and say, these are, this is this is the boundaries, this is the limits of what we're going to have. I, here's the thing, if there is no other board. College of Teachers don't have a policy, ministry is not going to impose a policy, none of this is being done. Then the the Hallton District School Board has a right, has a chance to be a leader here. And in my opinion, they have dropped this every step of the way. They could have shown that they are a progressive school board. They are one, especially in light of. Their mirror board and the Catholic system that you and I have talked about with their ongoings with pride flag and and their issues. The Hall District could have shown that we're, we are the progressive option, we're, we're the, we're the not antiquated. Option in the marketplace of Ontario education. And it said they hit it. They've dropped this ball repeatedly, 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 and they've allowed in the in the absence of actual leadership on this. And this is why I'm concerned is that they've allowed. The convoy yahoos to start dictating the terms of this. And in that case, nobody's going to win on this. We're not, we're not going to get a clearly defined outcome or we're going to get real, a real solution to this. We're just going to get more antics and rhetoric. Until somebody just says, no, enough's enough. This is the, this is the way it is. Take it or leave it. If you don't like it, leave.
Oh, I say one thing, I'd be surprised if if anybody could out, out progressive, the the school boards of this province. I mean. Is it likely that 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 in a desire to treat a a trans member of staff fairly, they would fall over themselves to a ridiculous degree? Yeah, I think that's that's possible. I don't necessarily think that that's at all the issue here. I think it's a, it's it's a, it's a mess of jurisdiction where nobody. Nobody, the the power doesn't lie in anyone. It's simple players to take the kind of critical size of action that the public wants to see. Either to just get rid of this issue, which would be my preference. You know, and to lay down the obvious sensible course of action, the the the. The way that member of staff dressed on at least one occasion, given the public images was completely inappropriate. Nobody knows the facts of the event of the events well enough to know. That person is still dressing that way. I mean, we've heard that they are. I don't know if that's true. But I I think we're expecting too much of the board, the, you know, they've been, they've been, the trustee said, go and form a policy. They said, we can't form a policy, so do it anyway. So they come back with a policy going, well, we we'd like it if people dressed appropriately. And everybody's going, well, that's a crap policy. It's like, well, no shit, Sherlock, we told you. It's fun. Yeah. Win. I think they're caught in a, in a complete no win situation. And then as usual, the trustees. Have waded into something that they're completely incapable of of handling properly and made an even bigger hash of it. I wouldn't put that at the doorstep of the staff, though, to be honest.
Maybe not, but what I I guess what frustrates me as a as a podcaster covering this is that we've asked the board to come on and say, can you explain this? Like let's like, give it, give us the the situation and nobody wants, they don't want to talk about it. And that's what I think is frustrating is that they're doing this all in. It's it's almost like they're they're doing it in camera. They're doing this behind closed doors. And when and when they open the door and shut the public in, the post like, okay, we want this and like. Freaking and it's just, okay, you know what? You're gonna have to make, take it action at some point. Explain the situation. And that's just. Very sad. On that note, let's just bring this one to an end. Take a break and we'll be back in a second with the second half of the episode. And we're back. And another story that we've talked about numerous times before in this on this podcast, but it's, it is not going away, is the. Saga of the Highway four thirteen. In the in this weekend on the Toronto Star, they had a big, big write up on. Basically that the environmental assessment for the Highway four thirteen, it's going to cost millions of dollars to do. And possibly have to do over most because this province has spent about thirty five million dollars over sixteen years assessing this project. And the fore government tried to push it ahead until somebody realized you actually haven't done. A proper assessment of what this highway could do to the to the land. Which is kind of typical of how this government operates at this point. I think we we know this is, this is not surprising that they really, you know, again. Those rules and regulations, those pesky rules and regulations that the rest of us have to follow. Well, how dare they get in the way of. A good business deal going through. Yeah, it's it, but basically, as the article in the in the Toronto Star was saying that. The environmental costs of this have not accurately accurately been analyzed by the province. The federal government has chimed in and said. We're concerned about the carbon emissions that would erupt from the from the, I guess. I guess when they say the carbon emissions, they're talking like, if that was how he's built and all the cars and trucks are traveling on it, what will the. Carbon emissions bring to the region, which they're saying it's going to cost, you know, one estimate was a hundred and ninety six thousand tons of greenhouse gases. It's a lot. Into the into the region. Not to mention it would the the vulnerable at risk species that would lose their habitats, possibly, you know. We wipe them out as well from the construction of the of the highway. Like a lot of this stuff was not calculated by the Ford government when they were pushing ahead of, we're going to build this this highway. Nobody had done this, this in-depth analysis. It was very, very sugar coated. And whatnot, mostly because the previous Liberal and Kathleen Wynn governments had started the assessment. But in, excuse me, folks, but in, I believe in, it says here, twenty eighteen. The Liberal Government basically discussed that they were told, no, it's going to cost all this much freight from our initial assessment and the Kathleen Wynn decided, no, we're not doing this. We're going to stop the project right here and there. And so, yeah, once that was decision was made, no more assessments were done because that would just be a waste of tax dollars.
Liberals not wasting tax dollars or some mistake?
Maybe, but I think in this case, you know, the the Liberal Government said. They got the initial look back for the, and they say it's going to cost us this much in terms of environmental impact in the, when government just said, okay. That's too much for us. We're we're not, we're not, we're not cool with this. Just stop the project, stop the assessments. We've made our decision. We're not moving forward with it. So let's not. The all the other stuff that has to come afterwards, just stop. We don't need to waste our money with that. Decision's made. And then flash forward to Doug Ford coming, says, oh, let's, you know, they did the assessment. Okay, let's move ahead. It's like, no, they did like the the first paragraph of the assessment. And you still need to do the rest of it, which right now the Trudeau government is saying, we'll do it. And from what we're, they're looking at, it doesn't look good.
Yeah, I mean, the the. This government makes a decision. I mean, it makes, it decides what it wants to do and then it tries to justify it. And all governments, I mean, to be fair to this government, all governments do that to an extent. However, most are. They recognize the reality of the situation is that environmental assessments have to be done because if you don't do them, you've just given a massive tool to your opponents. To to find reasons to stop you. So I mean, the the Ontario Liberals basically. You know, avoided the environmental assessment by having an expert panel say, no one wants this road. There's no demand for it. The way the province is growing, don't need it. There's no demand for it. The way the pro, the province is growing, don't, don't need it. So let's not build it and, and kind of, you know, environmental assessments are huge and very long, uh, years and years long process. So avoiding that was, was kind of smart. Ford just wants to build it and that, that, then I'm going to give a damn about any of that. Um, they're just going to do it. Or they're going to say they can do it. Anyway, I'm going to, I'll make a prediction, you know, uh, that I usually don't do, uh, but this is my prediction that I'm ninety percent confident of, and that is four one three will never be built because one way or the other, either through a change of government or by the federal government, basically finding a way to stop it, it will be stopped. Because if, if, if they have to do the environmental assessment now, that's going to take the rest of this term at least. The environmental assessment will find that it's a disastrous and it will find all the things that were found before that, that, that it's not needed, that it, that it's absolutely the wrong thing. That there's already a highway that is not used to anything like capacity that exists and that the, the that this is just a way of opening up land to, to development industry. I mean, obviously they'll find that because it's so obviously what this is all about.
Well, I mean, that's exactly it. I mean, this is, this, the more, the more actions that this government, this current, uh, Ontario government undertakes, the more more what you just said becomes blatantly true. Like the, this government basically is in the pocket of big business, uh, and their interests. Like this is a highway that nobody asked for. No, nobody. This was not a
The developers.
Except, well, except the developers. You're the only ones who've been pushing for this. Nobody else has said, you know, we really need relief off, I mean, everybody says we need relief and we need relief off the, of congestion on, on our highways. But nobody said, let's build a highway. I mean, I'm looking at a map of it right now. I'm like, I, you build this highway. I don't know who honestly would use it. I really don't. Like, I don't know, like, I have no purpose to take this four thirteen anywhere because you go up and around Brampton, up around Vaughn and you hook up to the four hundred. Maybe if I'm going up to Muskoka, it might save a couple, maybe a couple of minutes off my route.
Well, I guess people in Mississauga going up to cottage country might appreciate it. Um, but but yeah, well, until you build the houses, it has no function until the developers get their hands on it.
Right.
And it will have lots of function because like the four oh one, but that's not how we're meant to be building roads anymore. That's putting the cart before the horse. You're, you're putting the cart there, uh, and then saying, well, we better go and buy a horse then, which in this case is a gazillion, uh, single family homes. That's not kind of a weird metaphor there, but you know, if you get what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, the, in the Toronto Star article, this is what you and I were talking about just before we, we logged on here. Um, there's two, they have two individuals, one, one basically says what we just said. Eric Miller of, um, uh, research director for the University of Toronto, who studies travel modeling groups. This is, says it's just bad, bad policy. It's a development play. We've seen this with the green belt announcement as well. The only people who benefit from this are the developers who are making a whack of money with low density suburban housing who own this land. Contrast that with Bertaza Hader, who's a professor of data, data science and real estate management at Toronto Metropolitan University. This is the region has increased significantly, is significantly in population over the past four decades, which ultimately requires an increase in the expansion of infrastructure, he said in an email to the star. Public transit is neither efficient nor reliable in parts of the region where this highway will be passing through. And yeah, he's right, but I, I say this, this is what the, for this entire argument with the four oh seven was supposed to alleviate, uh, you know, thirty twenty five, twenty to thirty years ago. I can't remember exactly when the four oh seven was built, but this is the, this is the exact, oh, it's going to relieve, alleviate all the traffic and all the congestion on the four oh one. We build that and the four oh one will just, you'll just sail on through. Flash forward thirty years, folks, that ain't the case. Probably because the four oh seven caused a fortune to drive on. So, you know, that's a big, uh, that's a big caveat that people, that nobody wants to mention. But, you know, may, may address that issue and take out that, that problem. And we've got a, you might be able to really solve the traffic on the four oh one. Instead of just, let's just build another. You know, and like, we can't just have the same solution of, oh, we have traffic on, on our highways. Let's just build another highway. Okay. So what happens when the four thirteen gets backed up with, with congestion? What are we going, what are we going to do then?
Yeah. I mean, it's brain dead. Um, I mean, the comment that, you know, parts, the parts where, where this road goes through don't have good transport. I can tell you why that is. No one lives there.
Yes, I know. I know. That's the other thing. I mean, if you look at the map, you know, you have Brampton and Vaughn to the south of it. But you're right, like to the north of it, there's nothing there. It's all farmland, which
I can't see, if you lived in Brampton, yeah. When they built the houses, yeah, but when they built the houses, they'll also bring in bus routes and they'll bring in all those other things, or they should do. You know, this is a road with, which has no purpose until the houses are built. It's, it basically runs through the vast majority of Ontario's remaining white belt, um, which for the last twenty years, we've been saying we should avoid building on all costs, um, because we should be looking at increased density instead. And I mean, I can't even bother going through the arguments of induced demands. Is there anybody listening to this, to this podcast who doesn't know the arguments of induced demand already? If you don't know, under, understand the idea of induced demands, go and look at the four oh one and count the lanes and, and say, if you add another two lanes to it, is it going to fix the problem? No, of course not. Peo- people, bodies take up transport to the capacity, to the level of capacity available. Unless they're stopped by something else like extortionate fees.
Here, here's my, here's my question with the fourth thirteen, because right now in Toronto, a big problem that downtown businesses are facing, and this is happening across the G, the nine oh five, is post COVID, they're seeing less and less people coming into their downtown cores, especially in Toronto. The, just people are saying, no, I'm, I, after COVID, I am working from home for now and I do not want to get on the go train. I do not want to go on the four oh one, the four oh three, the Q E W and commute into my job. I want, I want to work at home. Nobody's like, the, the, this, this, the assessments that we're, we're facing are another data that we've accumulated, like the, this last gentleman that we've accumulated to say, oh, we need this highway. Has nobody said like, what, what exactly is the commute? Uh, or how many people are coming into the downtown core? Like building a highway that goes around the north of the nine oh five, uh, north of the GTA. You know, because, oh, we have so much traffic. It's like, do we now? Like, I don't know. I, I've not been on a highway. I don't commute anymore. I have no idea. And I, I suspect there's a good number of me, good numbers of us who are, who are like-minded.
I mean, the province is still very busy. Um, whether total traffic is down at all, I don't know. I mean, I do think there are, you know, I think, I think we can all speak to the fact that there is a lot more working from home going on, but, uh, most people still have a mixture of, of, of at home and in the office work. And there's not obviously millions of people who don't have a choice to have to go somewhere to, to do their job. But this goes against everything that intelligent, uh, intelligent design. No, that's not, that's not a phrase I want to use.
That's the wrong issue, wrong topic.
Intelligent, um, thinkers, planners, scientists have all said, um, for decades and decades now. You know, the, the argument back in the day was they should have, you know, we should have built the Spadino Expressway and now we'd have a, uh, we'd have a a third ugly road to go along with the Don Valley Parkway and, and the Gardiner. When, you know, you cannot tell me that Toronto wouldn't be just as successful and but a far more beautiful city if none of those roads had been built. And other, other means of getting people around to being investigated instead. It's not even like it's cheap. I mean, how many billions, how many, many billions of dollars are we talking about for this thing? Think what you could build by way of public transport with that kind of amount. Fourteen, okay. Well, I'm trying to find the, the, uh, this is about thirteen billion, isn't it? Something
Yeah, I think that was the last assessment I've heard is about thirteen billion.
Stand to be corrected, but I mean, it's a huge number for, for, for a road. Which basically the primary thing that that would do is that, that every planning meeting in, in, in the cities of Vaughan and Markham and Milton, when the developers turn up, they say, well, hey, we've got this ride now. You've got the, we've got all this infrastructure. We should be really be building next to infrastructure, you know, because that's the wise and sensible thing to do. Was, you know, ignoring the fact that if the infrastructure wasn't there, you wouldn't have that argument. I mean, it's, it's all a fucking con, uh, the way this province works from beginning to end. And I can just imagine the meetings now with the, the, the frankly slimy and dishonest arguments that, that get taken to, uh, town councils when, when, uh, people are making arguments for building and then they're taken to, guess where? The Ontario Municipal Board, the Ontario Planning Appeals Tribunal or whatever the frigga is called. You know, it's like they're creating an excuse to build, basically, uh, at the cost of thirteen billion dollars. And yeah, give thirteen billion to new, uh, rail links or, or, um, light rail projects or, or god damn it, healthcare. I mean, Jesus, can you imagine that, that kind of sum put into healthcare?
I just thought some just being put in.
Formative amounts of money, you know?
Well, that's the thing, that thirteen billion dollars put into healthcare, put into our schools, uh, put into, you're right, like what if they just hand over three billion of that handed over to the cities in the nine oh five to make up for the, the, the lack of development charges that they'll be recuperating now.
Or, or to invest in, in better bus services to
Oh my God.
Free up, free up the, the ridiculous competitive bus system.
Bus, bus services, uh, uh, you know, better, uh, intensification downtown, but you know, better parks and amenities. Like there's a, there's a ton of more creative ways you could set, be spending this money rather than the eat quick, easy. Spend thirteen billion dollars on a wasted highway so that a handful of already billionaire developers can profit off of land that is essentially, I don't want to say useless, but I mean, it, it, it's, it's there, it's meant to be like, you know, carbon sink. It's meant to be farmland. It's meant to be anything other than just another sprawl for a McMansion to, uh, to, for them to sell, uh, for a bottom line in that particular fiscal year. This is what, what we're facing here is a, ultimately is a lack of imagination, which should not surprise on part of this government. I mean, this government has no imagination in terms of development, uh, sorry, not development, in terms of policy or in terms of governance of this province. Uh, it's just, it's a sad pathetic state of affairs, I'm afraid. And on that note,
Well, I was just, well, the final note is
Sure.
Yeah. I, I'll just quickly repeat. I don't think it's going to be built, but I would say to environmentalists listening to this, to, to look at the career of, uh, of Daniel Mark Cooper, um, a British environmentalist from the UK, better known by the name Swampy. So in the nineteen nineties, uh, got evicted from various tunnels that he had dug, uh, in an attempt to stop a bypass and, um, and basically how, uh, successful a certain amount of civil disobedience was at stopping road development in the UK. Just saying, I'm not saying it's the right thing to do. I'm just saying civil disobedience works, man, sometimes.
I, I don't even think we need to do that. I think like this, here's the thing, this government, especially they, they, they talk about all these plans, they do have a tendency of just screwing it up. Like the, the, I, I, maybe in the end we're just, we're just tooting our own horn because we got nothing better to do. But I, I, I do wonder, will this province actually be, this government actually be able to follow through on this plan? Only because they do not have a history of success on anything. I kept trying to think of a success story and I'm just, I'm honestly drawing a blank. Even the, the best stuff that they're hoping to, to pull off has been met, has been married in, uh, accusations are just, uh, you know, that's just mucked about. So.
I, I think this will become the, it has to become the, 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 the battleground where, where either governments are stopped from, from this ridiculous idea that you just build roads forever or not. But I, I, I'm confident it will never be built. Um, that would be my guess. Could be wrong.
Time will tell. All right, folks, that's it for this week, uh, or for this Tuesday. We'll see you on Thursday. Take care. Bye bye.